We will call the meeting to order and let the roll call show that all school board members are present. We do have someone new tonight that I will introduce just real quickly. Melody Shiplett is here in Mr. Wade's stead as our Vance liaison. So, welcome to our meeting and hope you enjoy yourself as much as we do. That's all I'm gonna say. With that said, we will start with the student pledge leader.
Yes, I would like to introduce Mrs.
Is that on? I don't, it doesn't sound like that's on.
Do I just need, I need to be closer? I'd like to introduce Mrs. Lintel Murphy, principal of Hays, to introduce our student pledge leader.
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce you, introduce to you Matthew Smith. He's one of our fabulous Hays hawks. He is active in all kinds of things at our school and I'd like Matthew to have a few minutes to tell us about the things he does at Hays.
Um, I have fun at Hays. I like playing with my friends. Um, I like soccer. I like the math that we do there. I like the books that we read, the library that we have, and it's what I like about my school. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bear with us just a little tonight, we're new in this room too, so we're kinda getting the logistics worked out here. I'm gonna work up a sweat before the evening's over, I'm pretty sure. Brings us to student spotlight.
And next I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Fitzgerald, who's the principal at Longfellow, and he will introduce our student, spotlight student for the evening.
Yeah, you can do it from there.
It's closer.
Does Ernie need to come down there?
I'll be there when he's finished.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce to you one of our outstanding 7th graders. He is the son of Maria Anwon Delatorre. He is also accompanied by one of his teachers. He, I met with him today and he, he wanted his teacher to come. And you know, I think that says a lot about, you know, both about him and about the teacher. So, at this time, I would like to go ahead and invite Diego up here as I tell you a little bit about him. This year, he did participate in the Duke Talent Search and he's very active in band. He likes to read, play soccer, video games, who doesn't like to play video games, right? He likes to paint and trivia games, so he is a very well-rounded student. He is most proud that he really just wants to do his best in school and he really likes to be a help to the teachers. Diego, my man, step up.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Before we get to him, and I know he's got a lot of good things to say, I wanna go ahead and bring up Mrs. Scott and let him, let her say a few words about Diego.
I'm really happy that I have this opportunity to come here and talk to you guys and give you a little message about my student Diego. I'm lucky enough to have him two times throughout the day. I have him in pre-AP Language Arts where he just received an award today as one of the top scholars in the class and also in Speech and Drama. And that's an area where he's branched out. He's decided that he's gonna be my main media man next year. He's gonna be behind the scenes, working the technology for our new Speech and Drama competitive class. So, I'm really proud of all of his accomplishments and what he's been able to do this year, stepping outside of his box per se. Diego, thank you very much for having me here, it means a lot to me. I've enjoyed having you in class and I look forward to another year with you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott and Mr. Fitzgerald for asking me to come here tonight. Thank you to the board for making me this, for making this possible. I'd like to share with you good news that is happening at Longfellow Middle School. State testing finished for us the end of April due to some testing problems. We had to redo some of our reading tests last week and everyone did a great job. We saw a lot of improvement in our scores because we had an excellent teacher supporting us. Last Friday, we enjoyed watching our classmates perform at the first ever Longfellow Scott Talent Show. This was a fundraiser to help our media club on their trip to Easty National Conference in Philadelphia this summer. We raised a total of eight hundred sixteen dollars. All, our students were treated to an Islander Appreciation Day Assembly last week. Our Islander Council and students introduced us to their culture and holiday they celebrated May Day. We watched a short historical video and enjoyed watching traditional dance and musical performances. There were lots of band, orchestra, and choir and guitar activities the past couple of weeks. A large number of Longfellow students participated in tryst events from marching and concerts to individual and group performances. Our six girls were rewarded with a trip, field trip to two baseball games the past couple of weeks. They earned this trip with good attendance, great behavior, and passing grades. For some kids, it was the first time they have ever seen a real baseball game. This week, Longfellow will be assisting the Kids Against Hunger Organization for the third year in a row. All students will be packaging meals on Tuesday and Wednesday to help in hunger here in the US and throughout the world. Student council elections will be held on Wednesday and new officers will be elected for the 2015-16 school year. They will meet over the summer to plan out year's activities. On Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM, our 8th grade will have their recognition ceremony in our, in the auditorium. Academic, athletic, and achievement awards will be given out. Earlier today, the 6th and 7th graders held their award assemblies to recognize outstanding achievement. As you can see, there are a lot of great things happening at Longfellow. Our school is one of the best-looking buildings in the district and we are proud to call it ours. Every day, we recite our school motto, "Good, Better, Best. Never let it rest till your good is better and your better is best." Mustang.
Pride.
Thanks for having me here tonight.
Since this is on, I'm gonna stay down here because we now go into recognitions and I know we have a good number of them. So, I don't wanna delay things by running back and forth, so.
I would like to introduce Mrs. Mrs. Susan Thomas, who is a 2nd grade teacher at Taffawa Middle School. And they are going to share with you a little bit about their kindness monsters project. And to get us kicked off, I'm gonna ask our media team in the back to go ahead and show the video of the students sharing kindness at St. Mary's. Thank you. And Mr. Ray is going to start the video for us, it'll be just a moment. Before we start the video, instead, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Thomas because they have quite a presentation prepared for us about their project.
Good evening. I promise not to take too much of your time, but I just wanted to share these wonderful students with you. I have several of them that wanted to come. What you see in their hands are some things that this program provided for us. This was a gift. I was nominated by one of our OTs here in the district for a kindness project. This is a company that literally does nothing but make monsters for young people to enjoy that show them how to be kind to one another. And as you can see, some of the smarshmallows, that they each received after they completed the 10 acts of kindness that you'll hear about on the video. Looks like we're ready. This is a kindness project that was gifted to me by a company out of Indiana. The kids got to express what they felt was kindness in their own cards and they got to give them who they wanted to, just to make their day. They have found a way to make this their very own. Kindness truly does get kindness and it is a living, breathing example of something I couldn't teach in a classroom. Our wonderful IT department came with us to St. Mary's, or to St. Mary's to show what we did. We went to a rehab unit and the kids got to give, well, they got to give their kindness cards, which they happened to have brought some for you this evening. So, I'm gonna let them give you their kindness cards and kindness magnets. Well, I quickly tell you about this and I want some of them to give in their own words the things that they got from. These are the kindness cards that we gave and we also made kindness magnets that just remind you to every once in a while, be kind to someone just for no particular reason. Random acts of kindness really are the best. This is what the project consisted of. It was 10 acts of kindness. There we go. The first being, what we did was kindness posters. We created, the students created all different kinds of posters and put them around our school just to remind people that, as this one said, be careful, warning kindness is coming your way. We did a kindness jar, whoopsie. We did a kindness jar that was, you know, that is in our classroom, I have no idea what I've done now, that is in our classroom, where the students get to pick out an act of kindness. If they're feeling grumpy one day, they get to go to the kindness jar and be kind to somebody else. It's amazing how it makes you smile as well. We did something called guerrilla gardening, remember that? The guerrilla gardening was where they got to choose and, and show places that they wanted to see be brighter and, and we planted seeds. It was the really, and all of this came included in the kit. Albert, Albert is our mascot. Albert is a promise monster. He's right there in the middle, he's the blue one. And this is Albert's house. Albert's house is a kindness house. Albert went home with every one of our students and every time he came back, the students got to fill out a brick that said what act of kindness they performed at home. And before he knew it, we had a whole household made of kindness. The magnets and the cards and we also did bookmarks that were distributed through the whole community with St. Mary's help, with the students' help. They got to give the book, the magnets to whoever they wanted to. And the bookmarks went to Garfield School. And on those, and as you can see on yours, there is an access to a website that we created. And it's got a link there, if you wouldn't mind opening it, where you can get back in touch with us specifically and tell us what that kindness card meant to you. And as you can see, we've had several responses and it's been very wonderful. If you could open up just one of them, that would be magnificent. We were able to put out who we were and this first one talks about that where it was found and, and what it meant to the person that found it. It happened to be a bookmark that was found at Garfield School and they were very happy. One of them says that it was a bookmark that was found at Garfield School and it said, "It made me feel like I have happiness or kindness in me." So, that was very wonderful. The other thing we did was plant a kindness tree. Originally, the idea was to hang kindness remarks on trees. However, we were very fortunate enough that we have a butterfly garden at Taft. We lost a teacher, or there was a teacher Kathy Clemens who taught at Taft years ago and we lost her to cancer. And they created a butterfly garden in her memory. This is her daughter who just happened to be in 2nd grade when Ms. Clemens passed away years ago. She has, she wanted to plant a tree, so we decided to make it our kindness tree. The kids have adopted that tree and they'll have it for as long as they want to. Come by and pick up trash and water it and they know it's their kindness tree. We can see it right out of our window. One of the most things we got to do was send happy mail. And through a wonderful sergeant at Vance Air Force Base, she took our postcards that we made and is sending them to soldiers that are away from their families. And the last thing we did, we actually have an example of an un-grumpifying wand. Students found that this actually worked on teachers as well, it's a magnificent thing. It's simply to remind you that if you're a little grumpy, perhaps maybe there's another way to handle it. The things that you see up there are actual orders, the things that you can make from the kindness company where they will send a monster to you. One of our young men ordered this very monster for himself and he has quite a collection going. He is one of the kindest students you will ever find and now he's got a way to show that to everybody. These are the two creators of the project, Erin and Michael Bogan. And they are just, as I said, just a young couple who have lots of students, lots of kids. And they have joined two families together and they just go around spreading happiness everywhere they can. We're very lucky to be gifted this program as they are in Indiana and that's where the program is primarily. So, we were very lucky to bring it here to Oklahoma and we wanted to share it with you. Thank you. I have some wonderful young ladies and gentlemen here that are with me. These students are the ones that chose to come. The first one is Hayden Burks. Could you come up and receive this from this gentleman? I'm sorry, we'll go in. Nyla Chavez, she'll be next. The next one's not here. Outstanding. Thank you. Liam Franklin. The next one is Henry Canell. Thank you, sweetheart. Can you shake this gentleman's hand? Thank you very much. Hunter Clemmie. Triton Moreno. Steve Mendros. Oh, bless his heart. There you go, friend. Ah, there you go, good handshake. Jaslyn Olson. Yeah, she's a jazzy, she's a jazzy girl. My friend Connor Payne. Keegan Peterson. That's the un-grumpifying one, ah, that's even better. The Macy Rogers. And Lou Wheeler. Very good. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much.
I just wanna say to you kids real quickly that as I was watching the video, I saw many of my friends in that video. And so, I just appreciate you all showing those acts of kindness to, to folks that I know and care for, so thank you very much for that.
Back over here, we're gonna play musical podiums, Mr. Courier. It is an honor to be able to recognize our students for academic prowess. Anytime that we can do that, we are certainly excited about that. I know as middle school principal, it was always an honor to recognize those 7th grade students who were identified to be part of the Duke Talent Search. These are students who show academic excellence in the classroom. And each year annually, the 7th graders are chosen to participate in the Duke Talent Search. And what that entails is, it entails a 7th grader participating in the SAT or ACT. Our students in our district elected to take the SAT. And this can be a daunting and sometimes intimidating task for 7th graders because they're taking a test that typically high school students take. And so, they take a Saturday out of, out of their weekend and they take a test and what they do is, the scores come back and we recognize students who scored in relation to juniors and seniors on the SAT. And so, these are students, what's exciting about this program, these are students who we will continue to see coming to board meetings. We'll be recognizing them, they'll probably end up being academic all-staters. But again, for them to take that test that typically their high school peers take can certainly be intimidating. We had seven students participate in the Duke Talent Search this year and three of those are gonna receive state recognition on May 20th. And those students are being recognized because they scored in relation, or even higher than the typical juniors and seniors across the United States on the SAT. So, we are very excited to be able to recognize them here. They're probably gonna be recognized as well at their awards assembly and then again, three of them will be recognized for state recognition. So, we want to honor them tonight and let them know how proud we are of their accomplishments.
Yes, the students are going to come here, introduce themselves, tell us the school they attend and who's here with them this evening. And we appreciate your recognition of these students for their outstanding achievement. I'd like to begin by introducing Nicole Anderson.
Hello, I'm Nicole Anderson and I go to Waller Middle School and I have my mom here with me. Thank you for having me here.
And next, we will have Diego join us, who did such a wonderful job earlier this evening.
Hello, my name is Diego Delatorre and I go to Longfellow Middle School and my mom's here with me also.
So, he's a pro, he just walked right over to the other podium. Next will be Ethan.
Hi, I'm Ethan Bravender. I am currently a 7th grader at Waller Middle School. I'm here with my parents and my younger brother.
Next, I'd like to introduce Devon. You may not have been able to join us, that's okay. We'll get a certificate to Devon. Nicole.
I'm Nicole Dirks and I'm a 7th grader at Waller Middle School and I'm here with my mom.
Next, I'd like to introduce Blythe Holcomb. We'll get her her certificate as well. And Ethan Laws.
Hello, my name is Ethan Laws and I go to DeWitt Waller Middle School and I came here with my mom and my dad.
Let me get a picture of you guys. We'll be seeing you again, I know, but lots of talent there. One more. Thank you very much. We were very excited in late April when we learned that our school district had been selected for two awards of excellence from the Oklahoma School Public Relations Association. The first, I'm very proud of because there's not a person in the room that didn't contribute in some way to the effort. And it was for the communication that was associated with the superintendent search. You can only receive 50 points through the awards contest and we received 49 out of 50 points. And so, I thought that spoke a lot about the process, but obviously, the final candidate spoke even more for the process.
I was just about to say, that's in spite of who you ended up with, right?
It was a success all the way around. The second award, the community can take pride in as well because it was also a community effort. It was for the education celebration, which the Ena Public School Foundation so generously co-hosted for us so that we could do a couple of things. First and foremost, so that we could honor our Teacher of the Year candidates and celebrate all educators in our district. It was also a great way for the community to be a part of that process in a way that they had not had the opportunity in the past. And it was also a great fundraiser for the foundation, so we know that that will also be reinvested and make a difference in our classrooms. So, tonight, I would like to introduce Jennifer Fields, who's the Executive Director of the Public School Foundation, and extend a congratulations and our gratitude for their participation in this project.
Well, it'll be, it'll be a short one. I just wanna thank Amber. And the foundation about a year ago, we're, kinda put our thinking caps on and wanted to reinvent our fall fundraiser. And it had been a banquet in the past. And so, we just wanted to do something different and reinvent it and Amber had the great idea. We couldn't do half the things we do without her. She is the best. I don't know where I would be without her. She's wonderful and we appreciate her so much. And it was her idea and then we just kinda took it and ran with it. And we had board members that really stepped up and helped in the selection process of the Teacher of the Year candidate or the, you know, the ending process of that. And so, it was a huge success. Tons of people were there and it was just fun all around and we're looking forward to doing it next fall as well. So, thank you for the award.
I would like to reiterate what Jennifer said about, first off, the event. I thought it was great and I look forward to us doing that again in the fall. Both of those awards, as Jennifer also said, are in great part due to Amber Fitzgerald. She doesn't get nearly enough credit for all the things that she does, we presented. Jennifer, with that award tonight, Amber has one that we haven't received yet, but we'll be getting her hers, her award as well when it comes in. But Amber, on behalf of this board and the previous board that you helped significantly on the superintendent search, I know, thank you very much. And for all that you do on a day-to-day basis, we wanna say thank you and congratulations on your two awards. Let's give Amber a hand.
And Amber, I too want to say that the way it turned out was good. Appreciate you badgering us to give Dr. Floyd another chance.
Me too. I appreciate you doing that.
Next item on the agenda is audience to visitors. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Let's see, where, okay. Where is that form? Over there? Okay, alright.
I don't see anybody standing up, raising their hands, waving at me, so we'll go on then. If you did want to speak to us, now's the time because there's a lengthy presentation coming up. So, next on the agenda is our superintendent's report, so.
Thanks for that. Appreciate that, Mr. President. Well, yeah, yeah. This will be no different. We do have a number of things to cover tonight and it's an exciting night for us because this is kind of the culmination, first thing we're going to cover in this lengthy superintendent's report, is the rollout of our strategic plan. And we had a tremendous turnout of folks that were willing to provide their input into our strategic planning process. And so, now after six months or more of at least a thousand points of feedback across the community, we, tonight, will be unveiling our strategic plan and ask, we have invited folks, if they were able to, to join us that were participants in that. But also, we believe that this plan will help us prepare students for the future better than ever before. And it obviously would not have been possible without the support and leadership of a number of folks, including all of our educators, community members, parents, students, board members, and administration as well. Board members, you have three documents there in front of you. You have a brochure that is actually, a front-back brochure, looks like this, that is actually the strategic plan. The second document is the Enid Public Schools Strategic Plan, Strategic Action Plan, that has a lot more detail in it. And then, the third document is the implementation timeline. We have with us tonight our consultant from Engage Learning, Dr. Carol Saxinian, that helped us through that process. We also had Melody Pascal help us as well. But Dr. Saxinian is here and she has a PowerPoint presentation that she said would take no longer than three or four hours, right? I told her to try to whittle it down. But again, this is kind of the culmination. UConn is also going through this process. So, after Dr. Saxinian leaves us tonight, she's headed to UConn to continue helping them. They're a little bit further behind than we are, so it'll be a little while longer before they get ready with theirs. But I do think that this has been a great process. And so, I will ask Carol to step forward and talk a little bit about belief statements, called action statement, learner profiles, learner outcomes, goals, year-one focus, etc. So, Dr. Saxinian, we'll turn the mic over to you.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good, good.
Good. What a tough act to follow, public recognition of the kids that were due to challenge Oklahoma. That's exciting. Happy to be the middle of the high school principal and seeing that many kids qualify at that level is huge. I don't know about y'all, but I thought the SAT was dawning in high school, much less in junior high, if I had to take it. That's exciting. Thank you, Dr. Floyd, for this. It is a very tremendous, a tremendously exciting time right now. Like you said, the opening of the new building, all the excitement y'all have going on in Enid. And then, to roll this out and to be part of this dynamic group and all the people that were involved in this, many of you and many of people, many of the people in the audience, was such a privilege for me to help y'all facilitate through the process. I'm just going to go through a few pieces on the process and overall, how the plan basically was evolved. First of all, and we're going to cover just quickly, the process itself, the strategic, we call it design transformation or strategic plan process. Review how the beliefs came about, the call to action, learner profile and outcomes, goals, and then the action plans. Just to give you a little history about our model, it, we really have many principles, but these are some of our main principles behind the process. Obviously, student-focused, big behind community-based. As he mentioned, there were a thousand points of contact, over a thousand points. All the feedback and opportunities we got through different, various sources was incredible. So, it was all based on the needs of the community. Obviously, the whole plan itself was aligned, but more importantly, aligned to the needs of the district and the needs of the community and the Oklahoma standards. Research-based, all of our work is research-based and proven for the results. And then transparency. Our plan, we have a model where everything's done electronically and housed on a website. So, at all times throughout the process, any and all of the members can access all of our documents. And then, of course, whoever, and I know after tonight, it's going to be housed publicly. But I mean, throughout the whole process, that was always transparent. And whoever the district gave access to, to work on this, was always there and open. It never went away, neither worked. Actionable, obviously, we produce a plan that we, to produce actions and to produce results. So, it's based on actionable information.
Try to keep going. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. Okay, timeline and participants. Dr. Floyd mentioned a number of people that were involved. But I want to mention, want to kind of share with you our overall process and the timeline. The first steps of it, which basically began in January here, involved us collecting information. We had some summits. I think there were a couple of summits where over 300 participants came or to give feedback, focus groups, where we had a series of groups go through. Dr. Pascal, who was here, went through and asked a series of questions to get, to identify trends and commonalities among some of the answers that people stated. And then, we had surveys and y'all had a good number, over 600 surveys were turned in where various stakeholders had the opportunity to give their feedback. Then, we rolled into the design team. The design team was over 40 members and it had community members, some students involved. Some of you board members were on it. We had central office people, central office staff, principals, and I believe some teachers even. A good array of, a good array of diverse stakeholders so that we could really have a lot of feedback and have different lenses coming forth to develop the plan. So, through that three or four week period, we did a lot of, and you're going to see momentarily, we developed several of the components of the plan, which then moved us into the action teams, the final weeks, developing the actual action plans for the overall strategic plan, again, which you'll see momentarily. But basically, from January through April, the bulk of the work was done. The Enid beliefs, these are in your documents that Dr. Floyd mentioned. And this is probably one of the most exciting, concise documents that I like. And it was his idea to put this together and I thank him for that because you can see all the components, basically, except for the real weeds and details and intricacies of the plan, of the strategic plan. You can see most of the components here. And I have it on the slide as well, the belief statements. And y'all know what belief statements are, but it's just important to know the belief statements are the core values. And they're, the belief statements drove the whole plan. And I want to emphasize that this design team didn't sit in a room and just create belief statements. They analyzed all those data sources that I just mentioned, all the feedback that came from the focus groups and the surveys and the summits. They took all that data and took time to really review it. And then, through the processes we had in place, they developed some belief statements. And these are the things that they're really willing to fight for. I mean, you know, when you put a belief statement down, these are your true core values and non-negotiables. And you can skim through those. And again, they're on the different, the brochure as well. And then, what that led us to was what we call the call to action. There we go. The call to action. This is truly our vision, our vision statement. And again, this could only be done after the belief statements were developed. Because again, this, this takes it all, takes all those belief statements. Beliefs are one things, but they're pretty stagnant if they're not, if they're not put into an actionable, an actionable, actionable statement, excuse me. And so, this is what the group came out of with. "All EPS learners will be fully equipped at every level to be responsible, well-rounded, global citizens." Again, this is your vision statement, the ideal, the purpose of what you want the organization to accomplish and to be. It's pretty exciting. Some, one of the things we focused on here that I want to emphasize, we really reminded people, when you're putting this together, think about today's current pre-case students. Pre-case students are what, three and four years old? And we asked them to think about what year they would graduate. That's kind of scary, isn't it? Like 2029, '30. So, you really have to think ahead when you're putting together a powerful statement like this. And then, this led into what we call the learner profile. These are the skills and traits and characteristics that we want kids to have when they leave Enid Public Schools, when they graduate. We want them to be able to, we want to work on, we want to work with students to be able to develop these on a daily basis so they're present daily. And we're striving to get them there so that when they leave, they already have them. And you can see these, like technologically fluent, accountable, goal setters, creative. You can see those. But they came up with some really exciting things. And remember, keeping in mind that our graduates, some of our graduates are graduating pretty far out. So, we can't look at today. We need to look at ahead and see what it takes to be successful in the world when they get out of school. That led us to our learner outcomes. These are really what we want each, each Enid Public School learner to be, or really what they will do here. What do we want them to be able to do? And this just really, this aligns directly with the skills that we just covered, but it really breaks it down. The outcomes are really powerful because the outcomes really cause the action. Think about it. This is where we want, what we want our kids to be able to do when they get out. So, again, our plan had to evolve around that. So, all the strategies and things we put in place in our strategic plan, you know, was to ensure that these things would happen. And I want to emphasize that throughout this whole process, basically, the model looked like people sometimes working independently and thinking through things. And then, we had them work in small groups, which was a lot of the time. And then, we would always have activities at the end to bring the large group and the whole design and create teams to consensus, where we would all come out agreeing on what we came up with. In other words, we had to go through activities and we didn't end a component until we came to agreement as a whole. And then, that leads or led us to the goals. The design team, which was our larger group, their final activity was actually to develop goals. And these, we came out with seven goals. And these are goals, and I'm going to show you the whole goal in just a second. But I wanted to show you the overview. And here's the goals themselves and you can see who the leaders of our goals were. We have several of them in the room. If you don't mind, Dr. Floyd, I'd like them to stand, all of our leaders. All of you that led action teams and our goals, stand up. Don't be shy. They did a tremendous job, a tremendous job in doing this.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't want to negate, we've got a number of other peoples in the, in the room that weren't necessarily leaders. Anybody else, you go ahead and stand now if you were involved.
Has helped out.
Kyle, you stand, Willow Joe, y'all stand, yes. They were involved as well. Thank you very much, yes. But these are the seven goals that we came out with. And you can see they stem around personnel, professional development, facilities, community-parent relationships, curriculum and instruction, assessment and accountability, enrichment opportunities, and character development. Moving into those, to explain our model or the, or how the documents will look, basically, your goal is to carry you out for three to five years, basically, five years. And what you do is you put objectives in place that we call specific results. And the teams worked on these and you put objectives in place that will be sufficient to meet the goal. In some cases, you may only have one objective a year because it's a broad objective and, you know, it's a foundation to another one. In some cases, depending on where the status of that department or that, or that goal was, they may have several goals, so, I mean, several objectives to accomplish that year. So, you can see Goal One, it's written out. I know it's hard to see up there, but it's in your brochure as well and in your action plan. And there's Goal One. Goal One says, "We will commit our time and resources to the recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers and support personnel through continuous opportunities for professional growth." And then, you can see under it some of the objectives or specific results. Again, these are the things that are more measurable and the things that we put in place to accomplish the goal. And then, Goal Two centers on, focuses on facilities. "Providing and maintaining exemplary facilities that are clean, safe, and secure for all students." "These facilities will enhance learning opportunities in every curricular and extracurricular activity." And then, these are some of the things they had in mind to do. "Commission a demographic study to determine the student population trends." And you can see on how those evolved. Several of theirs involved studies and identifying current status so they could see where to move from there. And then, community-parent relationships. "Building and maintaining partnerships that will maximize the strengths, resources, and talents of our diverse community to expand opportunities for students." And that was a broad goal. I think that was in Amber's group. And, you know, increasing communication among school, parents, and communities. And while that, like I said, while some of them only have one objective a year, when you look at the actual action plan or strategic plan, there's several steps within that to accomplish in the year and they're big chunks of things. So, we really encouraged them to be realistic on how many objectives they were putting in for one year. And then, the curriculum instruction one. "We will build and maintain relationships that maximize strengths, resources, and talents of our diverse community to provide an environment where learners will become responsible, well-rounded, global citizens." Doug and his group had some extensive conversations on what that looked like. And they have a long list of things they want to accomplish. So, we really worked with them to narrow it down and do it, you know, do it year by year. But he's got some great things in store there. You know, starting with aligning the curriculum. What did I do? I did it. I'm an Aggie, what can I say? Sorry. Let me see if I can get that. Okay. Assessment and accountability. "Holding the community to high expectations through continual evaluation and communication of results." So, that's a big piece of the plan. You know, continuously monitoring and adjusting. And then, of course, figuring out all the pieces for evaluation. See, identify essential district assessments and timelines needed is their first piece. So, they, so they know what to assess and how to assess it and when, to see how they're progressing. Enrichment opportunities. "Enriching student, students' experiences through co- and extracurricular activities by providing excellent programs, facilities, and personnel support based on student interest." As we know, this is an exciting one because we know a lot, in a lot of cases, what gets, gets kids to school and motivates them. So, I was really thrilled to see that these enrichment opportunities were, was one of the main, main categories as a goal. And then, character development, the final one. "Developing and reinforcing the character of each student with emphasis on solid, on solid values-based system through in-school instruction, community partnerships, and mentoring." And they had some really good ideas going on about really expanding throughout the community some partnerships to get some, to improve upon and build upon some of the mentoring programs and some other things. And getting a character, character development program. I know that was quick, but I just wanted to go through it because you have a lot of documents in front of you. But what I want to emphasize before we get to questions is like I mentioned earlier, a lot of those initial pieces, the beliefs, the call to action, which is our vision statement, the learner outcomes, learner profiles, those were all the behind-the-scenes things that were critical to be, to be identified and developed in order to put a powerful, in-depth strategic plan in place. Then, when you see the actual strategic plan, you see the goals and you see the specific results, like I said, which are objectives. And then, you see action steps, that we call those action plans. The action steps, which of course have timelines, persons responsible, baseline data, mid-year data, so we don't turn, we don't just say we're going to do it and look away, but where there's progress measures in place. So, those are, that's really the actual strategic plan itself. Again, with those other pieces being critical to kick it off, so to speak.
And then, lastly, that third document you have there is the implementation timeline. And that, you can kind of look down there and see what the group came to consensus on for the fall of 2015 and then on out to spring of '16 and then '16, '17, '18, '19, and '20. And you can flip through there. And that document there kind of has our synopsis of our entire plan on three pages. And again, lays out the timeline that everybody came to consensus on that felt like, here's what we feel like we can do in the first chunk of time in this first fall of '15 and then on into the spring of '16. And then, we will be assessing along the way to see how we are doing in achieving all of those areas. And you can see that they're quite a And you can see that there are quite a few X's there in the fall of '15. About mid-year, we'll have to reassess and see how successful we were in chipping away at achieving all of those things. And then we'll reevaluate and see what we feel like we can get done the next semester. And so that's kind of how it'll work, and we'll be assessing and reassessing along the way. And, you know, two or three years from now, we'll look up and be amazed at what we've been able to check off and achieve. What kinds of questions would board members have of Dr. Saxinian about the process or any of the information she shared?
I'd just like to hear you, I mean, I know you've obviously done this elsewhere. So compare your process here to somewhere else. Do we rank up there, or were, was it a tough process to get through in Enid? Or how did you feel about the whole thing?
No, I think Enid, that's a great question. I think Enid was a joy to work with. And Dr. Melody, the previous facilitator and myself, talked about this at length. The people came in really open and willing and innovative to make changes that are necessary to, you know, to put the needs of the learners first and get them where they need to be in today's time, in the 21st century. Yeah, very innovative ideas, very willing to think out of the box. And then I will tell you, without a doubt, this group did a phenomenal job of always putting the needs of the students first. And that is not always the case. Sometimes it's easy, you get in a room and, you know, you don't do it intentionally, but it's easy to forget about the reason we're here. And this district, Dr. Floyd and his whole crew did a tremendous job of keeping the learners and the students at the forefront, which is the whole purpose of the strategic plan.
I think also, one of the greatest benefits of going through this process is we had a large number of community members that were able to provide input. And even setting on those all-day meetings that we had, it's good for us to hear feedback from community members like that that are not in the day-to-day education ease that we deal with all the time and the jargon that we deal with. They had great input for us and kept bringing us back to just what Carol said. And that is, you know, what is truly in the best interest of the overall population of students that we're dealing with now and into the future? And what can we do to best serve those students both now and moving forward? And I think the end product that we ended up with here, and you all know, this is the second time I've been through this process, and I'm very impressed with the broad scope of input we had and very impressed with the end product that we ended up with. I think it is going to yield significant results for our kids.
Absolutely. I ditto that absolutely, 100%.
Dr. Saxinian, we certainly appreciate your assistance. And please pass on again our thanks to Melody and the entire Engage group. Shannon is tremendous at what she does and I think is serving a great need in education today and what Engage does, most of which my experience is with in strategic planning. And I think this plan that we're presenting tonight to the board, hopefully for approval, will kind of springboard us into giving us a guiding force of what we need to do moving forward. And I'll just share with everybody else, one final comment, that it helps us in that when we get into the minutia of what we do every day, one of the questions you'll hear from me a lot is, well, how does that relate to the strategic plan that we all agreed on, that we would move forward with? And usually it fits into one category or the other. But if it doesn't, well then, maybe we need to be refocusing our attention on one of those areas that Carol just laid out for us. So I do think that's one of the guiding forces and one of the guiding benefits of the plan as a whole. So, Dr. Saxinian, thank you very much for your time, and we really appreciate it. And all of Engage learning's help as well.
Thank you. And I appreciate you, Dr. Floyd. And I didn't mention this, but, you know, Dr., a lot of times we see you ask the question about other districts. A lot of times you see superintendents come in and out because obviously they're busy dealing with lots of things throughout the days. And I want to commend Dr. Floyd and his staff because he was far none, I don't think I can remember a minute he missed. I mean, I mean that sincerely. He was engaged fully. And I think we all know in this room, the tone that that sets and the message that that sends. And he did an incredible job at leading this process. And I want to ditto what y'all said earlier about Amber because she's been phenomenal as the internal facilitator as we've worked together to make sure we get the plan presentable to y'all. So thank you all very much for your commitment.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. Yes, board members, that was a lengthy presentation, we know, but kind of the culmination of what we've been dealing with for months and months now, and really excited about that guiding force. So our recommendation to you guys tonight is to officially approve the Enid Public Schools' strategic plan. Will we approve?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Sally, Amber will have some information we can roll out to the press probably tomorrow, right? Got it tonight? Okay, very good. See, there, I told you, she's always ahead of the game. All right, I would like to say that's the end of my superintendent's report, Mr. President, but no.
I do, but...
Okay. Another things here quickly. Continuing on the topic of strategic plan, one of the first steps that we need to take place, and you might have heard her mention, thanks Carol, appreciate it, be careful with your travels, is one of the first steps is we need to renew the demographic study and the capacity study that was done several years ago. So I contacted a couple of different outfits about that and settled on using the same guy that this district used last time, and that was Danny Jardine. He was with an outfit called Carter last time, but he's no longer with that group. However, he has all of our data and has actually already, based on my several conversations with him, begun that process. So just wanted to inform the board that we are moving down the pathway of redoing the, and updating the demographic study and the capacity study. And Danny will be here for the July 20th board meeting to present his findings and report both on demographics and capacity study. And that'll be a couple of the first steps in the process there.
When were the last studies done?
'08?
'08, '09. And then there was a small update done in 2013, just on student projections.
Is the '13 update, the one, if I remember right, were, population-wise, were projected in 2018?
Yes, yes.
We, I do need to make a correction on that. I was not aware of the updated information that Danny had provided to Sean right before he left. And we've been reporting to you guys that we've already outpaced what was projected for 2018, '19. And I don't know that that is 100% accurate. So he'll be reassessing that and he'll share us, share with us the updated information when he comes in July. So, but we do know that the growth has moved forward at a faster pace than we had assumed. Just not sure about the exact numbers. So he'll be here in July. Board members, you have at your place a diagram of this building. The first page is this floor and this room and all the surrounding offices. You'll see HR down, let's see, you have to kind of put it this way, where the welcome center is up here in the left-hand corner. And then you've got HR down the hallway, and you can see the other offices. And if you turn the page, that's the next floor. And those are the, up there on the next floor, you've got the instructional coaches on this side, federal programs, CFO. And mine is in the corner, and then the assistant superintendents around the corner. And then we've got some business office down the other side, and we've got a number of conference rooms. And so that's, I thought you might appreciate having a diagram of that because it's easy to get lost in this building. And when, matter of fact, when we get done and get ready to go into closed session, you can either go out this door, you have to go out the door with a panic bar, not the other one, because it'll get you down the ramp, or this door right here. And we're going to go, you can go either side up about five steps on either side and into the conference room that is right behind us, and that's the closed session room. So we'll do that here in a little bit. Wanted to mention to you, board members, we've got commencement coming up. We were able to get May Fete in yesterday at 3:00, and it did not rain, so that was good. But that was my first May Fete, and it went very well. Then we also had baccalaureate last night, very, very good ceremony. Got commencement coming up here Thursday, and we're going to cross our fingers and hope for no rain. Watched the weather this morning, and it said that was the only day this week that we're not supposed to get significant rain. So hope that's correct. If we do not, I mean, if it does rain us out, we'll make that decision late in the afternoon of Thursday and go out to the Chisholm Trail Expo Center. So, but right now it looks like we're going to be all right. So, board members, some of you are new, so you probably don't know the spiel here in the process. So at about 7:10 or so, the board members and myself and Doug and Randy and the people that'll be on the podium will meet at the Field House at 7:10. And...
Short workout.
Yeah, we're going to do a short workout. But we'll just convene there in the Field House. And then at around 7:25, we'll file out and go up onto the stage at the stadium. And then Mr. Anderson will start the processional right at 7:30. Seniors will come in, and Lucas Mira is the senior class president. He'll come to the lectern and have a few things to say, and we'll have the National Anthem. And then Lucas will ask the group, the audience, to be seated. And then he'll introduce me, and I'll introduce all of the board members. And I'll probably just ask the audience to hold their applause until we get everybody introduced, and then we'll recognize the whole group with applause. Also introduce Mr. Stafford and Mr. Bader. And then I will introduce the salutatorian, Katie McGrath, and she'll do her salutatory speech. I'll introduce the valedictory scholars, and there's a long list of those folks. And I'll also introduce their parents. And then I will award this salutatorian trophy to Katie. And then I will award the valedictory trophy to the valedictorian. And then I'll introduce, there is a senior speaker, Robert Angleton. I'll introduce him. Then I'll also introduce the valedictorian, and he'll have an address. And then I'll introduce our board president, Ernie Courier, and he will say a brief word.
Says Dr. Floyd.
Says me as I'm dragging on here, I'm sorry. And then we'll get ready for the diploma presentations. Randy does the, not this Randy, but Randy...
Johnson.
Johnson, I think he actually introduces the names, says the names, and then the kids come across and shake the hands of Mr. Beer Schmidt, me, and Ernie. And then they say, change the tassels, they toss their hats, and we're done, right? Now leave out anything, Mr. B?
No.
Okay. So we will see everybody at 7:10 at the Field House and cross our fingers that it does not rain.
And we will have parking inside the gate.
In the grass area. Thanks for mentioning that. It'll be just on the west side of the Field House in the grass area.
Mr. Beer Schmidt, my definition of brief is different than Dr. Floyd's.
They've already discovered that. Thanks for pointing that out. Moving along.
I would like to say, have we all noticed how this one's going much longer than last board meeting?
Oh, yes. When you and I were not here.
We were done.
Both of us were not here.
I just want to point out when you're interviewing, you've seen the senior speaker, Robert Angleton. I believe he goes by Connor, so you might want to verify that before you do any introductions.
Yes, thank you. And I've got a whole bunch of other names that I need to practice, make sure that I...
Just don't want you to mess up graduation.
Yeah, I do not want to mess up graduation. Let me just make that point underlying right now. Thank you. Connor Angleton. Thank you. And I've got pronunciations that I need to practice at graduation practice on Thursday morning. All right, we hosted a 6A state championship baseball tournament this past week, and that went very well. And we are getting ready to host the JuCo World Series starting Friday. First pitch, Mayor Shuey is going to throw out again. And did you ever get to throw out the first pitch when you were mayor?
Yeah.
Did you skip it up there, or did you get it there?
I threw a strike that knocked the catcher over.
All right, good, good. And I had no doubt that that would be the case.
That's the way I remember it.
Oh, okay, it's all coming back to you now. Board members, you have also a diagram in front of you that says Enid Public Schools looks like this. That is actually a rendering of what our electronic marquee sign will look like out here on Garrett. And we're going to try to make it two-sided so you can see it from both ways. They've kind of got it sitting on the ground here, but we're going to raise it as high as the city will allow us to. We're still, still working on that. You've got a handout at your place that says Greater Enid Chamber of Commerce. That program, that annual meeting and banquet comes up on June 18th. I will be attending that. If any board members would like to attend, you can either let Carol know tonight or you can check your schedule and RSVP. If you want to attend and choose to RSVP yourself, just tell them when you called RSVP to send us the bill and we'll, we'll process that $35 per person ticket for you. Anybody know right now? Want to let Carol know right now if you want to attend? Does anybody know?
I will probably be there, but I'll probably be at the bank's table, so...
Okay. Well, if decide you want to attend, you can either RSVP yourself or let Carol know, and she'll do that for you. Okay, board members, you probably received from OSSBA a letter about board member training credit hours. And I think the State Department, I mean, OSSBA was not necessarily prepared for the new state superintendent to send that letter out that she did because they are bombarded now with the same questions that Carol and I had for them. And that is, hey, can you send us what you have on file for our training credit hours for all of our board members? And they wouldn't even respond to us because they're so swamped based on the letter that Joy sent out on that. But just a reminder that newly elected or appointed board members have 15 months to get certain requirements out of the way. And if you have questions about that, feel free, as to where you stand or you have documentation that you want to make sure you get credit for, Carol will become the go-to person for that. Right now it's Carl, but we're transferring that to Carol because we're taking some HR stuff off of her and Amber's putting it with one of her ladies. But, so Carl or Carol are your go-to people for all things school board training-related. Haven't really had a chance to talk with my folks about this yet, but Willa Jo had a good idea. I think it's Willa Jo or Jenny Wong mentioned that we probably need to have an open house for this facility. Let the community come and take a look at it and everything. I wanted to mention to you that we've got two board meetings upcoming. One is a call board meeting a week from this Wednesday at noon, very brief. All we're doing at that meeting is selling bonds. So kind of want to go around the room here and see how many, make sure we're going to have a quorum. Matt, you going to be able to make that one? Yes? Tori, yes? Willa Jo, Ernie? Yes? Colin? Okay, everybody can make that, so that's good. The next thing I want to mention is that our regular board meeting was scheduled for June the 15th. We would like to back that up a week to June the 22nd for the following reason. The prior week, when, which is the week we spend getting everything together and getting the board agenda ready and everything, Wednesday, the 10th, is the USSA New Law Conference. And then the next two days, on the Thursday, the 11th, and Friday, the 12th of June, is the COSA Summer Conference that we'll all be at. So it would help us tremendously if we could move that June regular board meeting back a week to the 22nd. And if we were to do that, I want to make sure we would have a quorum. So who can make that change to the 22nd at 22:00? So who can make, uh, that change to the twenty-second at six P.M. that night? Matt? Moving it from the fifteenth to the twenty-second? Yes, Willa-Joe? Yes, Ernie?
Like, so I'm looking real quick.
Colin?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that? Okay, good. So we, uh, we'll take care of, uh, the appropriate notifications. We're moving our June fifteenth regular board meeting back a week. And if we're going to move that back a week, um, I might propose that maybe we could have an, we're calling this building the ASC, Administrative Services Center. That building that we're moving out of will become the SSC, right?
Support Services Center.
Uh, Support Services Center. SSC over there, ASC here. So, um, what do you think about maybe opening this building up and us giving tours or whatever from like twelve to one on the twenty-second? And people can come in and just roam around. Uh, I think we'll be somewhat moved in by then. Um, and then, um, we'll have our regular board meeting that night. You guys won't necessarily need to be here for the open house unless you just wanna come, but, uh, I was kinda thinking about that. I didn't even run that by. You guys, y'all see any problems with that?
No, I would love to do that. And perhaps maybe with back-to-school events, we can have any activity as well as before. You wanna stop your school, you could also stay here as a weekend event.
Yeah. Did you have anything else in mind? Was that you that mentioned that to me?
Yes.
I think that'll work. Have one, like, on a twelve to one, people can come on their lunch hour and then as we get a little bit closer to school starting, maybe do an evening one?
A lot of people are anxious to see it, I think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we're thrilled to be in here, so... All right, we will, uh, move forward with that. Thank you very much. And, uh, we will, if you'll make that change on your calendar then, to the twenty-second at six P.M., would appreciate it.
So has everyone now moved?
Oh, no. Oh, no. We're, we're not moved at all yet. Uh, the only thing in here is actually the Welcome Center where people come to enroll their kids. But very shortly, in the next week or two, we'll be moving offices over here. And as soon as everybody in that building gets moved over here, well, then everybody from Harrison moves over to, uh, that building. Okay, uh, next is the, um, For the People, A Vision for Oklahoma Public Education, the, uh, uh, OSSBA Conference that you can get a bunch of, uh, credit hours out of the way, by the way, if you attend that. Uh, comes up on August twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. And, uh, thought we would kinda go down the line here and see if you would like Carol to register you for that, uh, conference. Jenny?
Well, Rob.
Uh, it's August twenty-eighth through the thirtieth.
Probably on the twenty-ninth.
So go ahead and register you?
Yeah, for that.
Uh, Colin, do you know?
Uh, probably twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
Yes, for Colin? Yes, for Kyle?
I'm gonna have to get back to you.
Maybe?
Already taken care of.
You're already registered, okay?
I'll let you know. I'll let you know. I'm not sure on the date.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is it maybe?
I'll have to get back to you. Yes, oh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
And then board members, you have this long handout at your place also says, uh, fourteen-fifteen EPS, End-of-Year School Activities. Uh, it's a bunch of, uh, end-of-year activities, different, uh, schools. Just thought you might, uh, be interested in that. Adams Elementary has their hundred-year celebration next year. We just, uh, last Thursday night had, um, St. Mary's Hospital, a hundredth year anniversary. And now we're having, um, Adams' a hundredth year anniversary this coming year. Uh, so, um, if you have any, any ideas on, uh, celebration ideas or if you have any interesting historical information about Adams, uh, feel free to, uh, funnel that to Amber and we'll incorporate that into the celebrations. Ernie and I, uh, were fortunate to represent EPS, uh, at Washington, D.C. Reason we weren't here last month and the meeting went a lot quicker, obviously. Um, but, uh, did wanna give you a brief report on that. It was, uh, I was pleased to, uh, accompany that group, a lot of chamber folks, all city folks, uh, Ernie and I, and we were able to make contact and have, um, um, a good visitation and information sharing with Congressman Lucas, uh, Congressman Cole did not attend, but, uh, Congressman Breidenstein and Senators Langford and Inhofe as well. And then, uh, I got to go on the, uh, trip that went to the Pentagon as well and we met with the, uh, Under-Secretary of the, uh, Air Force. And, uh, that was, um, pretty interesting as well. They're, they're pretty serious about that, uh, security at Pentagon, I can assure you. So, um, that was, it was a good trip, though. Uh, Ernie, what'd you like to say about that meeting, that, uh, trip?
Well, not really much to add. I always think that trip is beneficial or I would not have, uh, asked Dr. Floyd to consider going, but, uh, I think the one thing that I'd like for our community to know is that we are represented well. We have, we have folks up there that listen to us, that, uh, take the time to meet with us. Uh, they actually, instead of us going to them, we actually got in a meeting room. They each came to us and offered us an hour of their time. And so, uh, we had their undivided attention for, for a good, solid hour with each person we met with. And so it was, uh, it was a very beneficial trip. Uh, I know that Dr. Floyd got to connect with some, uh, staff members that work in the education field and so I, I think, I think it was a good thing and I hope we do it again, so...
Uh, we, obviously, a lot of that information centered around, uh, the, the, the community's support of Vance Air Force Base and, uh, all the things that this community has done in the past to support them, uh, including the education system, I think is beneficial. I think they appreciate that and, uh, uh, obviously, one of the reasons that, um, Vance Air Force Base has been able to make it through the backgrounds, uh, in the past and hopefully, uh, in the future. Obviously, my part was to talk about education and what I did, uh, was touch on four or five different topics. One, uh, encouraged them to, uh, share it with them that we're in favor of, uh, pulling back on the federal overreach and, uh, prescriptive nature that is rampant in the current law. And we're in favor of restoring an appropriate balance between federal, state, and local autonomy. Second point was to share with them that we're in favor of standards, accountability, and assessment, but we think that those details need to be left to the state and local levels to craft and define. Number three, regarding accountability, we like the fact that the Senate Committee, now it's called the, uh, they don't like using No Child Left Behind anymore for all the negative that's surrounding it. And now they're calling it ECAA. Uh, the fact that that, at least in language right now, eliminates the hundred percent proficiency requirement that was inherent in No Child Left Behind that hasn't been updated in, um, two decades. But, um, we are in favor of eliminating the hundred percent proficiency because it's not realistic, uh, annual measurable objectives, adequate yearly progress, supplemental education services, and the twenty percent set aside in the highly qualified teacher requirements. But while we're in favor of reauthorizing that whole bill, um, we definitely are not in favor of requiring states to rank schools based on achievement, uh, because there's no way to make that fair and there's no way to make it equitable to those districts who have harder to teach students. Number four point, uh, was that we strongly support early childhood education, but not if it means siphoning money away from K through twelve education. And then lastly, we strongly oppose including a quantitative piece of teacher evaluations as a requirement of tying student outcomes to teacher evaluations. We, we need to keep the qualitative piece, but delete the quantitative piece. So those are the five points that I shared with, uh, that group and, um, I hope that, uh, they acted like they were listening anyway, kinda like y'all are doing right now. But, uh, so at least we had our say and, uh, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to attend. I'm trying to move quickly, Mr. President.
I have to listen 'cause I gotta know when to go on.
That's right, that's right. The rest of them can take a nap. All right. There was another Title I portability issue in there and I think that is it on the Washington trip. Inhofe is in charge of a whole bunch of things up there, uh, and, uh, education is not historically one of his, uh, front burner pieces, but his, uh, education person was, uh, was very amenable and, um, and, uh, got to spend some time with her.
I will say, though, while you, since you mentioned that, that, uh, it's been a couple of years now since I went to D.C. with the, uh, OSSBA and we got to meet with him and that, it was that year that he actually, uh, authored some bills that were very favorable to education and so...
Oh, good.
He, he, he listens.
That's great. Just one, uh, quick update, uh, on the, um, ad valorem issue of the, trying to rectify the twenty-two-year mistake by the, uh, Tax Commission. Um, we've shared with you in the past that, uh, we are partnering with a number of other districts to, uh, move that ball down the pathway and, uh, I'll, uh, later on be sharing, um, some documentation with you about that. But I do want, wanted, did want to share with you that, uh, we have been in contact with, uh, a number of those other districts. We're trying to continue to get more and more, uh, on the bandwagon that are in the same boat that we are and we are moving down the road on trying to, uh, recover some of that money because it is the right thing to do for our taxpayers and it is the right thing to do for our, uh, students. Uh, Community Partner Award from OSSBA, can you quickly say a word about that and where we stand on that?
Absolutely. We are, uh, I have one more letter that will be sent in two weeks tomorrow, but it doesn't want to be June fifth. The page is already in Oklahoma. We're very proud to nominate the Enas Much Foundation in the United Way of Enid and the Northwest of Oklahoma for their contribution to the creation of our center. And thank you to Willa-Joe for writing a letter, uh, recommending them as well and actually also recruited some other letters from the community and...
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little bit for, hard for us to hear. I think we're gonna have to figure out a solution to, uh, that microphone situation down there. Go ahead.
And Chris actually also had the children, um, draw pictures and then they spoke to their teachers and the teachers wrote the letters, um, about how much the children enjoy the school. So my understanding is they will announce that award at the conference in August, so hopefully we'll have reason to be well represented.
Thank you. And then, uh, one last thing, um, you might have seen where it's been banted about, um, to maybe as the, as the legislature tries to adopt a budget and get out of town, sign and die here, uh, in the next few days, there was discussion about maybe trying to tap some, um, retirement system money, uh, teacher retirement system money to, uh, figure out a way to do that. Uh, but there is significant opposition to that. Carl, can you just, uh, briefly, uh, say a word about what your CFO group, uh, has, uh, stance that you've taken on that?
Uh, the group that met with us this last week agreed to send a joint letter to, uh, the members of the Board of Directors for the Retirement System recommending that we utilize a more conservative plan to project when that plan will become, um, actuarially sound. And the reason for that is that the current assumptions lead legislators to believe that we might be over-contributing or they might be over-contributing to the teacher retirement plan. So, uh, there has been a move in the legislature, although I think it's been, uh, warded off to borrow some money or to divert some funds that were intended to be put into the retirement system to the tune of about thirty million dollars. But, uh, we're opposed to that and we, uh, we believe the reason we should be opposed to that is that our first focus needs to be to get that plan a hundred percent actuarially sound and self-funded.
Yeah, and, and maybe I misspoke a little bit. Um, the original proposal was, they were trying to figure out a way to still provide teachers with a thousand-dollar pay raise, which everybody is in favor of and they deserve, but not at the risk of siphoning money from their own teacher retirement, uh, plan that is not yet a hundred percent, uh, funded. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend a legislative update meeting tomorrow morning at COSA if I find out anything different on that as to where they stand. I, I, I'm kinda hearing that that's off the table now, but, uh, don't know that for certain. Find out, sure, I'll let you know. That's the extent of my superintendent report, Mr. President.
You tired?
No, I'm good.
You can go if you want to.
Will y'all have any questions or comments from the superintendent? Those are the ones I've already made. Well, let's go on then because the next item on our agenda is consent items. And Carl, correct me, but I think we can take all of them, uh, four A, one through eleven. Would that be correct?
That is absolutely correct.
So unless somebody wants to pull something, I would entertain a motion to approve all the consent items.
Move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carl, if I recognize you, would you just walk us through the encumbrances then, please?
Certainly. General Fund encumbrances for this fiscal year, a hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, through purchase orders, twenty-three seventy-one. Recommend approval.
Would we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
General Fund change orders for the purchase orders in sequence just prior to the ones you just approved, ninety-three thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Recommend approval.
Would we approve?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Flags.
I, I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next from Carl.
Building Fund encumbrances, five thousand dollars, purchase order eighty-two.
Would we approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Municipal Tax Levy Fund encumbrances, purchase orders fourteen through nineteen, forty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Recommend approval.
Would we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And Activity Fund for donations and gifts encumbrances, uh, purchase orders eighty-two through eighty-four, twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents. Recommend approval.
Would we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial report.
We'll focus on the, uh, one-line summary sheet that you have in your iPads if anyone is interested. I do have copies of the backup data. I'm running fewer of those so that, uh, we don't waste paper, but it's there if you're interested. Uh, I'd like to point out one major thing on the report for this month. This is May and if you'll look at the first line across on General Fund, we have at the present time at the end of, uh, April, a cash surplus or cash balance of thirteen million, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty, uh, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, fifty-four dollars and forty-three cents. We will be processing and issuing and depositing in the bank accounts of our employees three payrolls in May. The way this works, uh, most of our people finish their contract at the end of this month and they're entitled to virtually all of their pay. We save one check for June to, uh, settle up on absences that might not be covered by leave. So essentially, our, our school year employees will be paid their entire contract by June twentieth, but they get three payrolls in the month of May. So most of that cash balance will go to cover those payrolls and next month's cash balance at the end of May will look significantly different. So just wanted to remind you of that. Uh, other than that, I don't have any other comments, other than the fact that we seem to be, uh, running true to form on the budget and, uh, we're rapidly approaching the end of the fiscal year where we'll be able to report, uh, our fund balance into the following fiscal year. Would entertain a motion to approve and/or try to answer questions if anyone has any.
Would we approve?
Second.
Aiden, is there any discussion?
I do have one on the building fund, Carl.
Yes?
Do we have any projects?
We do.
Either, okay.
We have a major parking lot, uh, repair and re-striping project on the drawing board of our architects that we'll be looking at. Many of these parking lots are kinda finishing up the last phase of the five-year building plan that we just are coming off of, so...
That includes this parking lot also, between here and the, uh, central kitchen. And then, on projects, um, I think I might have shared with y'all some months ago, but I'll remind you, it's a good time to talk about it, that I asked all of the, uh, campus remind you, it's a good time to talk about it, that I asked all of the campus principals to submit to me their need and want list. So, all the campuses have done that now, and we have separated that information to what we feel like we can get done in the way of maintenance and projects with the money that we have. Then another list of what would have to be done with bond monies, and then another one that is a good idea, but we'll have to put it on the back burner. So, the bond issue information will kind of be funneled in to the discussion of the next upcoming bond, which could be, you know, as early as February of next year, but the other list, we will be prioritizing to see what we can chip away and get done this summer.
How much do you usually try to carry over in the building fund?
Well, we normally try to carry over a few hundred thousand, but that building fund was grown to a huge extent because of the private donations that came to us in connection with the bond issue. And so, that was where we deposited those donations, and we're still in the spin-down phase of that. Actually, the parking lot for this facility will be funded with excess sales tax money, and the other part-
Oh, that's not building fund money?
Yeah, that's correct. The building fund, a lot of that will be focused on school building, parking lots, to upgrade those, restriped them, remark the handicap spaces. We've been working with Roy Easley to get that, all those drawings put together, and that should go out to build within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Carl.
Moving right along, would just give you a brief note that we're beginning to collect purchase requests for FY16, and as a matter of fact, as soon as these temporary appropriations, which are temporary estimates until the full estimate of needs is done in October, we will set up the estimated amount in FY16 and begin actually entering into our computer system the purchase orders for next year, all of which will be, or many of which will be issued on July 1. So, basically, this is a conservative estimate, very, very conservative estimate. It's reduced to about, by about 15% of what we think we'll really get. So we're looking at $52,855,000 for FY16 in the general fund, and in the building fund, about $2,614,000 estimated that will be available in the building fund. So, recommend approval of these temporary appropriations, which will get us started for FY16, which is upon us in less than two months.
Is there a motion?
Would we approve?
Second.
Get all that, just do it louder than the next word. Kind of like the chorus up here. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Out-of-state travel.
Okay, it's customary for the board to approve out-of-state trips by any of our activity groups. We have two requests, one for the wrestlers to attend the USA Southern Plains Wrestling Tournament in Dodge City, Kansas in late May, and the other is looking ahead to the 2016 Memorial Day Parade in Washington DC, to which our Enid High School Big Blue Marching Band has been invited. Recommend approval of both of these out-of-state trips.
Would we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Speaking of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any opposed? Okay.
I was just gonna mention that, speaking of band, you might have seen in the bills expenditure for two Penske trucks. Those are the band trucks that are finally getting ready to be delivered. I think they're getting painted now, and should benefit EHS band program for a good long time, and they'll have some advertisements on them, different places that helped, or donated the money to pool to get those to, and they'll have shelves in them and everything, and should serve the needs of Enid High School Band for a long time, so, something for us to be proud of.
Contracts?
Have three contracts. I believe you can approve all three of them together once I go through them, unless someone wants to discuss one of them separately. One is with Barlow Education Management Services, which we've used for a number of years to help advise us on employee relations and administrative consulting services. Another is with Hedges Regional Speech and Hearing Center for summer speech therapy services. If you'll recall, many of our students that have IEPs require summer services, and it's difficult for us to get some of our own employees to work in the summer that they normally have off, so this provides for that need. And then the third is an agreement with Northwestern Oklahoma State University for us to be able to use one of their classrooms to conduct a four-year-old program on their campus next fiscal year. And this will be not only an opportunity to have a four-year-old program, but also a laboratory teaching situation for the university and for observations for early childhood education majors. So, it'll be a mutually beneficial situation that we hope could grow into recruiting additional teachers for our state.
Yeah, I would like to say a word about that. I had a meeting with Northwestern folks recently, and you know that Greenbrier needed their space back, so we were pleased that Northwestern agreed to allocate us a classroom out there. So basically, we're moving the Greenbrier early childhood classroom out there, and it should be win-win for our students and teacher, and then their Northwestern students to be able to come in there and observe. So, win-win, and we've included a copy of that contract that is roughly the same as we had with a Greenbrier.
Is there a motion to approve these contracts?
Would we approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. On the service period for, say, Hedges, which is June 1 through July 10, does that correlate with what the summer school program has offered us?
Yes, with the special education summer school, we call it Extended School Year, ESY. We like our alphabet soup.
On the Northwestern agreement, you couldn't negotiate lower than a dollar?
Well, I tried, and they wouldn't agree to it, yeah. Inflation, yeah.
On the four-year-olds, how are we on enrollment with students?
That'll lengthy waiting list, right?
Yeah, we still have more need than we have space to provide.
Are we still taking transfers? I know I've heard several districts aren't taking.
We are taking transfers, but we're not providing four-year-old services. I don't believe-
Chris, you wanna chime in? Anything there?
And I didn't hear you, so say that again. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm clear far away. Are we taking transfers from other districts for four-year-olds?
Right now, we're trying to make sure that-
Who you calling?
I can hear you fine. Right now, we're trying to make sure that we have all of our own students' place. Other district people have turned transfers in, and then Mr. Rader will make those decisions.
At a future date. Okay, I just wondered, since I knew that some districts weren't doing that this year.
We have until July 15 to approve those transfers, and so, we're holding on to those until we get a chance to go through all of our applicants and offer them a position, and then we'll have to make a decision on that.
Okay.
I have a question on the four-year-old program. What's the security like at Northwestern? How are we gonna keep those kids safe? I mean, because it's a large campus, and there's a lot of people in and out.
Yeah, they won't go anywhere unaccompanied. Their teacher will be with them at all times, and they'll come in, only one entrance, and exit on only one entrance, and their parents will know where to go. And we're going to move the playground equipment also from Greenbrier out there, and put a cyclone fence up there to kind of corral them in one area as well. So, they won't go anywhere unaccompanied, and all those students from Northwestern that come in there to observe will have to have gone through a criminal record check. Yeah, we won't just let them roam the whole Northwestern campus out into the highway.
You never know.
But it should be win-win. We're excited about it, and Northwestern's excited about it. OSU has a program that is much larger, but I can envision that this thing might eventually grow to more than one classroom. So, I think that's kind of Northwestern's wish, long-term as well, but right now, we're just gonna start with one classroom.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to the exemption of two high school students.
This is an occurrence every year. At this time, we discover that we have a list of students who, for various reasons, usually moving in and being a military-related student, they do not have the opportunity to obtain their regular course of study and be able to take an Oklahoma history class, may even have passed a class in the history of another state. So, we request by letter that the board authorize us to request from the State Department of Education to exempt those students from an Oklahoma history credit. So, we can't name the students, but there are two of them this year. Recommend approval of this exemption.
Would we approve?
Is that your mo, okay, thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I believe that there was a bill passed this session to address this issue, so moving forward, it may not be necessary year after year, because once the governor signs that bill, I think all of the districts will be in the same boat. Mainly, they're doing it for military students, students coming from out-of-state, and et cetera.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy revisions?
Policy CKDA is also known as our 24/7 Smoke-Free, Tobacco-Free Environment Policy. It has become necessary for us to revise this policy to include simulated tobacco products, which is another way of saying e-cigarettes. The yellow highlighted areas on the proposed revision represent paragraphs that were altered and/or added to include information about the simulated tobacco products. This is a model policy, or very similar to the model policy, that was provided to us from the School Board Association. We did look at one other model policy that was provided by an attorney firm that serves a number of school districts in the state, and we found this one to be a little easier for us to utilize. So recommend approval of the revisions to policy CKDA.
And board members, we already had that no vapor e-cigarette procedure in our student handbooks, but we had not revised the board policy to match that, so that's what this is for. And also, I believe there was a bill passed this session that stipulates no tobacco, no e-cigarette, no vapor, 24/7 on a school campus, so we're just trying to match policy with practice here.
Is there a motion?
Would we approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, brings us to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? Okay, brings us to other reports, and usually, Mr. Wade brings his report at this time, so, Melody, you got anything to share with us from band?
I do not.
Well, we're gonna expect the same short, brief report.
I didn't know that.
You set the standard, okay? Anybody else, more comments? Other than how brief the previous meeting was?
There are cinnamon rolls for after the meeting?
Nice.
Or in between?
Thank you.
Oh, that said then, we do need to move along.
Need to move along.
No more comments are allowed. We talked about our special meeting coming up Wednesday, the 27th, and our next regular meeting, though, is, we've already agreed to move that, or do we need a motion on that?
Well, I ask if there was any opposition, and hearing none, we will move forward.
We don't need a motion, okay.
Yeah, I think we can just-
So, please make a note of that, and then discuss going into executive session. Do we need an executive session?
Yes, sir.
We do. So, do we need a motion?
Yes. I move we go into executive session.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion?